You guys are missing all the fun.
Are you going to say something about this?
No, no, I'm not.
You're going to let him walk around the room?
He has his mask on. He'll keep his distance.
But I don't have my mask on. I don't want to put it on because I'm 20 feet away from him.
Okay. Chair will call the December 1st, 2020 meeting of the City Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
I'm not going to forget this, Mayor. This is really important. I'm really angry with you about this.
Okay. Is the clerk on? Let's see. Yeah, he's muted. Maybe he can't hear us. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Mayor, we have a little bit of a problem.
Figures.
I'm working with Tom right now.
Okay. Can they hear us? Can they hear us?
Nope.
It was working a little while ago.
Go forward with the presentations or should we wait?
Um, I would say. I would say you can go ahead with the presentation if you want.
Okay.
Is it being broadcast? I mean, is it?
Yeah, okay, yep.
Just to. He just. One item. And here. There are two that have been added.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Is this the amendment?
Mayor, you may start.
Great. Clerk, if you please, call the roll. You're muted. Can you unmute?
Did you want to do the Pledge of Allegiance first, Mayor?
Uh, we will do it again, I guess. Please rise for the.
Us on the.
Call the December 1st, 2020 meeting of the City Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
You're here. Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, our quorum is present.
Thank you. Do have, uh, two presentations real quick. The first one is a proclamation that was actually. There we go. Thank you. First presentation is a proclamation that was actually issued yesterday. Evidently, uh, yesterday, December, or November 30th was a popular day to retire, not only for Chief Reine, but several in the, at the State Journal Register, which I thought would be good to recognize them for the great work they've done over the decades. And, uh, you know, I'll just go ahead and read it, even though they're not here present. Like most media members, they don't like to be on the forefront. They like to be behind the, uh, mic or behind the camera or behind the, uh, pen and paper, in this case, or behind the lens. And it reads, whereas we gather this evening in true 2020 fashion over Zoom, at that time, as we were doing it by Zoom, honor and show our appreciation to three individuals who made print publications an invaluable source of information in the capital city for over four decades: State House reporter Doug Finke, political writer Bernie Schoenberg, and longtime photographer Ted Schurter. And whereas in our own investigative research, in order to provide a timely and accurate proclamation by deadline, it was difficult to find sources who were willing to go on record due to how private Doug and Ted are. However, Bernie's friend Google had a lot of interesting facts and information about him that we'll have to share at another time. And whereas Doug Finke started the state, at the State Journal Register in 1970s and began covering the last year of Governor Jim Thompson's administration in the late 1980s. Since then, he has written or co-written the State House Insider column for the SJR. And whereas Ted Schurter began as a staff photographer with the State Journal Register in the 2000 and became Assistant Photography Editor, they say a photograph can be understood by anyone, no matter what language they speak. And Ted's photography is no exception. He could make a story come to life, and let's be honest, everyone wants their picture in the paper. It's a headline that everyone truly worries about. And whereas Bernie's Thursday and Sunday columns were always highly anticipated by local politicians, especially his election predictions, however, most were very nervous to take his call and preferred letting him leave a message. He will be remembered for his tenacity, fairness, and also his desk, because that was one filing system no one will ever forget or understand. And whereas 2020 has been the year of COVID, which is limited interactions, but I can say, because of COVID, I finally was interviewed by Doug Finke twice this year, the first time in my 18 years in office. Ted Schurter photographed my third fire chief appointment just yesterday. And Bernie covered the opening of Archer Elevator Road Tuesday of last week, which has been the project over two decades in the making. And whereas the son of former Streets Commissioner Mayor Ozzy Langfelder, and now as mayor, you have been there when no one else was, even before the days of email and social media, and I thank you. Your job has not always been easy. You announced breaking news. You reported on both the unfavorable and favorable moments, and even written and photographed the difficult personal stories. But you did your job. You did your job very well, and we are grateful. Now, therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with our City Council and residents, do hereby recognize the important work each one of you has done. Today is truly an end of an era, and Springfield reporting will never be the same. You have performed a tremendous public service. Therefore, we proclaim that Monday, November 30th, 2020, shall be Doug Finke, Bernie Schoenberg, and Ted Schurter Day in the City of Springfield. Thank you for making Springfield and our residents more engaged and informed, and for bringing our city closer together. We also appreciate you taking us from the days of the typewriters to Twitter. And this was issued last night at their going-away celebration. So we'll get this to each one of them through Brendan Moore, and we really appreciate it. And one thing with the media, through the years, they personally, they touched all our lives in one way or another. For myself personally and our family, Bernie Schoenberg's covered my father when he was in office, but also through the challenging years when my mother had Alzheimer's and did a nice job bringing that to the forefront. And then Ted Schurter actually did the video of my father in one of his last, uh, video productions with regards to his journey in his life. So we really appreciate all reporters, but especially on this day, Doug Finke, Bernie Schoenberg, and Ted Schurter for what they've done for Springfield. So, thank you very much. And then next, gives me a great pleasure. This is, seems like a two-week send-off for Chief Reine, even though he gave me the same, same notification. And so we asked him to come up, and then actually I asked Chief Winslow to come over, because some people might not realize this. I think some do. But actually, come on up, Chief, if you would. You can help with the presentation. This is a dynamic duo of the, I call them the Alton Boys, because they both graduated from Alton High School together. And they did a great service for us here in Springfield together. You know, brought the Fire Department and Chief Winslow, of course, the Police Department, but they worked in tandem, bringing us to the forefront on how both departments, first responding departments, should work together. They did a great job. But we really want to, again, recognize and thank Chief Reine for all he's done, especially with the incident command staff or the team structure with the county, and putting that in place for our coronavirus, uh, response and moving in that direction. But most importantly, how we respond better and document how we should plan for those unexpected moments so we can better serve the public. So we do have a small token of appreciation, and he may predict what this is, but we did customize this for him.
He has no idea what this is. He's nervous now.
Yeah, that's right. So it's Abe Lincoln. It has.
That is awesome.
Says government of the people, by the people, for the people. And of course, it has its COVID mask on and has the city emblem and then also the Fire Department emblem.
That is tremendous.
Congratulations. We really appreciate your service to the people of Springfield and beyond.
That is very nice.
So you want to say a few words?
So it's funny that I get to follow, um, the media, because, you know, you hit that home. The media tells our story, and in my, in my time in this office, they've been very fair. Even when the story wasn't favorable to the Fire Department, they were fair in the reporting. And so I too thank you guys for that. And really, that's, that's all forms of media in Springfield. We're very lucky to have that. As I've said, and again, the two-week send-off, it's, it's kind of funny. I, I, I appreciate it. I really do. I've gotten so many texts, so many emails, and, and just words of appreciation, and it's humbling. It's very humbling. It's not, it's certainly not expected, and I do appreciate everybody that's, that's sent me well wishes and, and asked about, you know, future plans and things like that. And I, I can tell you that, um, you know, this, this is a challenging job. Brandon's got his hands full. It's, uh, it's going to be a challenge. He's up for the challenge. I think he chose very well. I think that the Fire Department is, as I've always said, it's, it's more than about one person. That's why we have a command structure. That's why we have the, the staff that we do. We don't keep secrets from each other. And that's, that's what makes it work, is knowledge is power, and we have shared that knowledge through the command staff. So Mayor, thank you. I really appreciate this, and I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate the trust that you put in me. It's funny, when I first got appointed, people just, you know, we're in a political town, and people said, well, how in the world do you know the Langfelders being from Alton? And I told them, I said, you know, my third conversation with the man was when I was interviewing for Fire Chief. And that's a testament, because the Fire Department wasn't always like that. It was, you know, for years, it was, uh, it was just not like that. And, and I appreciate the trust that you gave me and, uh, and, and all that you've done for the Fire Department. So thank you. And, uh, I'll stay in touch.
And at that time, I didn't know that they both went to Alton High School together.
I didn't.
Winslow, you want to come up and tell us any good stories about Chief Reine before he takes off or any part?
I think we're having mic issues. I think the, is this thing on?
If he doesn't want to, he would like to, and take a picture, but you want to say a few words? That'd be great.
No, just for Al, congratulations. You've done a great job. I'm so proud of you. It's weird. We talked about how we both ended up here.
Yeah.
Not knowing I came a few years before Al, and there's several, actually, people that went to high school in Alton that work in government here in Springfield. Dan Wright over the State's Attorney's Office, Steve Shuffle over mass transit, other people within the Police Department and in the Fire Department from Alton. And, uh, I think what it is, we all moved here. We loved it. We found love with the community. We fell in love with the, our jobs, and it's just all worked out. And Al's done a great job. Couldn't be more proud of him. Wish you the best moving forward. You know, whatever you need, my friend, we're here for you. I'm sure Brandon's up to task. They got a great command staff at the Fire Department. And one thing I can say is that we've always worked well, police and fire. We give each other good, good crap every once in a while, but we all work well together. So. With that said, I always tell them, I fire guys for sleeping. You pay them to sleep, but it's all right.
Let's take a quick picture?
Yep. Smiling with the mask.
Yeah, I'm still smiling. Smiling with my eyes.
And if Alderman Redpath in the middle, you're upcoming?
Sure.
For our opportunity, you got two high school graduates of Alton, both chiefs.
Class of 89, Joe, boss.
Class of 89, yeah.
Class of 89. That's the year I got married. Great, thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the November 17th, Point 20 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Posse say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved, second.
Moved.
Been moved and second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Posse say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, do you want to move that 2020-480 off there so we can make amendments?
Yeah, motion to move 2020-480 from the consent agenda to the debate agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? This is regarding the utility assistance program that we're going to amend. All in favor, say aye.
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 Posse say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda with the exception of 2020-480 on final passage.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-314, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-404, 2020-406, 2020-438, 2020-442, and 2020-464 remain tabled during committee. Is there a discussion on any of those? Next item on the agenda is number 2020-480. In ordinance proposing a COVID relief for CWLP Small Business Assistance Program using the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund, ER IRF, and a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 for the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to amend Agenda number 2020-480.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second. The First Amendment is with regards to increasing the amount from $500,000 to $1 million and having the up-to-$3,000 assistance provided for a small business. Is there a motion on that amendment?
So moved, second.
Second.
Any discussion on the business portion of relief?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer? Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I am, I'm going to vote for this, although I'm concerned about dipping into funds that, that we have put in place for, um, specific, for specific issues such, in this case, this is going to do a lot of, lot of, go a long way for our ash ponds. I realize that businesses are struggling, but we've got other funds as well that we could, we could pull out of. And, uh, you know, my concern is, once we get, which, that's a whole nother issue about dealing with the ash ponds. But, um, once we start finding out what the costs are going to be, my concern, if we don't have the money to, to support that, it's going to create a increase, electric increase for all the citizens of Springfield. And, uh, so, uh, but I am for it because businesses are hurting. But I will say that this will be the last time that I'm, I will allow, that I will personally vote for something to come out of this fund that isn't directly related with environmental issues. Much like we do with our Fund 95 and our gaming, and our, you know, from our gaming. I know Alderwoman Turner protects that pretty, pretty much, and we need to protect this, so. But I will vote for it this one time, and, um, I'm just concerned that we're dipping into it. And we, we've got to start moving on this ash pond issue, and, but that's an issue for when we can get together and go into executive session, because I do know that there's litigation on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo Alderman Hanauer's comments. I, I guess, I'll say stand, but sit in support of the, of the proposed amendment. We do, needless to say, we have businesses that are struggling and need assistance. I do have a question of, if anybody is on here from budget, I have a question. What, what is the balance that's within this fund presently?
Yeah, Doug's coming up.
Thank you.
Doug Brown's coming up.
Um, it's, it's, it's close to about 23 million.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, vote, say aye.
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 Posse say nay. Motion carries. Second Amendment is with regards to residential assistance in the amount of $100,000, with the maximum amount paid to a resident, $500. Is there a motion for that amendment?
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
Is, is that in, is that part of the, the total million, or is that an additional addition, uh, out of this fund?
That's in addition.
So we're taking 1.1 million instead of, initially it was 500,000.
Correct.
I just echo what I said before. My, my concern with this is that there's a lot of other funds that, there's a lot of other places that people can go to get help, but I understand people are hurting and, you know, but I, I, why can't we take it, I guess my question is, why can't we take it out of marijuana money?
Well, this is, uh, specific, well, with regards to this fund, actually, it's a environmental and rebate fund, so it does fit that parameter with regards to that. So that is helping, uh, individual residents with regards to their electric bill, uh, from the utility. So originally, when we started this fund, started at zero, now it's, uh, as Doug Brown alluded to, $23 billion. So it's a pretty healthy balance. I think everybody echoes the concern with the ash ponds and addressing those concerns, and we will do that when the time arises.
Well, that, that, that ash pond cleanup could be upwards of $100 million, and that's, that's why I'm trying to protect this as much as we can.
Yeah, that's why we established it in the first place, so we understand the sentiments. Alderwoman Turner?
I appreciate you following up on my request from last week, but I, I do think that the $100,000 is, is a bit low for what we're trying to accomplish. And I do understand what Alderman Hanauer is saying as well, that there are other places that people can go to get assistance. The problem is, as with most things now, all of those funds are being very quickly depleted. So there's going to be a huge number of people that are going to need assistance, and there's going to be no place for them to go. So I think that if we're going to offer assistance to businesses, which I totally support, like I said last week, we should also offer assistance to residences. So, uh, I wasn't, even though I was the one that requested the ordinance, I was not consulted on the drafting of the ordinance or the amount. So if I had been consulted, I would have asked that the amount be closer to, uh, 400,000. And that doesn't mean that we would spend all of that money. It just means that it would be available.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, whatever happened to the idea of a possible credit? I think that was mentioned last time, and I think City Legal is going to look into it, doing a credit instead of basically a fund transfer, because it, and this money is just, you know, in one fund and it's going to another fund in the utility. Granted, we'll be losing revenue because of not getting it, doing the grant instead, but whatever happened to the idea about doing a credit instead?
We got to pay for it somehow.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This, this is actually, both of these, uh, is set up actually would be a credit to the account. It would not be money to an individual, but it would be a credit to an electric account. This was originally discussed because of the, to supplement the other various programs going on because of the inability of a business and, of course, residential to be able to, to afford their, uh, electric or utility bills. So this was, I think, originally intended to provide for a credit, which would be administered through the CDBLP, but would act as a, in effect, a reduction of any electric bill. So it would be in the form of a credit, not a check.
So we have to back up a credit with? So we have to back up a credit with monetary, you know, money, other than like, because when other businesses do it, don't they do a credit, and then it's not really, they're not paying for it, it's just reducing your bill, giving you a courtesy credit or something? So we can't do something like that?
After Alderman Proctor, we'll have Alderman McMenamin?
Just to follow up, I guess, with that, is, you know, the concern might be that if you're trying to give a credit to what's due, that you're giving away free electricity. So we're categorizing it as a rebate, so it's something that, you know, it's already taken place, that we're rebating for it, so, which is the authority of the fund that was created as well.
And could you follow up also with assistance that were given to people this year compared to last year?
Yeah, I actually saw some numbers, just as, from last year to this year, our customers have received $832,000 additional money so far, and that's for the ones that have reached out to us and have applied. There's many customers that still haven't, you know, reached out to us, and they're not applying because they're just, they don't want to communicate with us. So if we can get them to communicate with us, we might be able to get them more dollars from the COVID dollars that are out there. There's a lot of money that's out there right now, and we want to get that to our customers, but they need to talk to us.
Is that because they don't know about the program?
That's possible. You know, we've communicated that with phone calls and letters in the past, and put it on social media, and I know that it's somewhat shared, but it's still, I don't know if it's just, is it a lack of interest, is it a lack of not understanding what the program entails? You know, it's kind of hard to say what the motivation is for them not to want to reach out to us and talk to us.
I think it's a combination of things. I used to come, came from banking, as Treasurer Buescher has, and usually if people are behind in their bills, they don't tend to answer those calls from people they owe.
Yeah, but we're trying to help them.
Right, but we'll just keep promoting it as much as possible.
Thank you.
Mayor?
First Alderman McMenamin, then Alderman Hanauer.
I support both of these amendments, and Mayor, I'm glad you discussed the history of this fund, because five years ago, we had $0 in this fund, we had $0 in the environmental fund. The source of the money for this fund came from our renegotiation of the coal contract, and at that time, as a council, we debated how much of that renegotiated contract savings should go immediately to the ratepayers, and how much we should accumulate into the fund. So now, with the accumulation of money in that fund, we're going to give a rebate back to the people that really contributed to that fund. In other words, it's electric revenue money that's going back to those that contributed to the rebate, and we're giving it to those that are hurting the most in the current economy. So there's logic to this approach, and we do have volumes of folks out there hurting, and the eligibility criteria is set up so that we're going to help those that are most in need. So this is in addition to the other programs that are out there, and it shows a responsiveness by the city council to the current situation that many of our electric customers are facing, so that's the reason I'm going for it, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Hanauer.
For Doug.
Right.
One of the things, just to let you know, I had a, I had a couple of people contact me about the wait times to try to get in touch with CWLP. I don't know if we can add people to the phones, or what we can do, but the wait times to get through are sometimes in excess of, well, I know, a lot of times in excess of 30 minutes, which, for, these were business people trying to get through, and, so, if we're going to ask people to contact CWLP, we've got to be able to give them the ability to get in touch with them without having to wait, you know, 30, 30 minutes and more. So I don't know if there's a way we can move some people over to the call center temporarily, or what we have to do, but that is an issue that I've heard from numerous people about trying to get in to discuss payment of their electric bills for their businesses that are outstanding, so.
Yeah, that's true, they get hung up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the issue is, is that there is going to be a higher volume of calls right now, with the amount of people that want to receive, you know, assistance with their bills, as well as us dealing with COVID-related issues as far as staffing goes. You know, we have many staff that choose to take child relief COVID pay, you know, and we have to allow them to be off. So, you know, we are bound by those things. I believe, you know, between the union and management, you know, the supervisors that we have are helping out and assisting as well when the call volumes go high, so they're doing the best they can with the staff they have. One of the things, too, that, I mean, unfortunately, too, to, you know, navigate the software, and, you know, the knowledge base that's required to deal with customers, takes months of training for that, for customer, you know, service reps that are on the phones like that, so that's not an easy thing that we can just throw people at.
But with this program running out, rolling out, we will take a look at this process, like you brought up, Alderman Hanauer, and see how we can maybe dedicate a phone number or whatever, but we'll take a look at that before we make the announcement on the process.
And with that, Mayor, you know, that is true, we're going to be using our Energy Services Office to help manage those key accounts like that, since we're talking probably about 200 to 300 maybe businesses, that's the group that we're going to use, you know, to have them help out with that program for the business side.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Yes, one of the complaints that I've heard is there's a technical issues, basically when they're called to pay their bill on the phone, they get dropped in the middle of it, and they get disconnected, and they have to call back two or three times in order to complete it.
Yeah, once they hit a call volume, I think, I can't remember what it is exactly, but once they hit a high volume of calls coming in, then the phone lines start acting, basically, and not allowing people to stay on the line and those kinds of things, so it's, it's, it depends on when people call, and if the call volume is extremely high like that.
Seems like we could maybe talk to somebody about getting it fixed, you know?
Oh, that requires more, I think, of an infrastructure issue, I can, I'll look into that.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? So the amount's $100,000, is there amendment to that?
I made an amendment for it to be raised to 300.
Second. Been moved and second to raise it to 300,000. All in favor of the amendment? Roll call. Say, roll call vote for the amendment to 300,000. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie? Alderman Proctor? Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
No, because we've got three other programs that are dedicated for this, two other city programs, the Roundup Program and the Dollar Per Month Program, and then we've got, also got I Heep, so I think we're kind of jumping too quick on the residential side, so I'm a no vote.
Alderwoman Connelly? Alderman Donlin? Alderman Hanauer? Five yeses and four nos, Mayor.
And I'll vote yes, so it passes.
Could I please be added as a cosponsor?
Yes, that was supposed to be on there, I thought. Is that correct?
It is, yeah, yes, it is.
Yeah, may I add you on there as a cosponsor? So any other discussion on the, do we have to, that takes care of both amendments, correct?
Then the amendment, as you just changed it, the Second Amendment, as you just changed it, please.
So the Second Amendment as changed to $300,000 with $500 maximum per resident? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So any discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory? Thank you. Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie? Alderman Fulgenzie? Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
I'm a yes, but point of order, we approved the First Amendment, which was offered by Alderman Redpath.
Correct.
And then we had a roll call vote on the amendment by Alderwoman Turner.
Right.
And then there was another voice vote. What was that for?
The, you may recall that there was the First Amendment, which was voted on by voice. The Second Amendment came up, there was a motion to amend the amendment to the 300,000, which was voted on by roll call, then you had to adopt the amendment as it was changed, which was the voice vote.
I see, thank you. I'm a yes vote on the ordinance as amended.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, Agenda number 2020-497, an ordinance approving the appointment of Brandon Blough as Chief of the Springfield Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading, Agenda number 2020-498, ordinance authorizing the funding in an amount not to exceed 3,500,000 dollars for the remainder of the contract term for RFP number UE19-26, a multi-year contract with GE Steam Power, Inc., for emergency boiler and equipment for the Office of Public Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That concludes that portion of the meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, that's not correct, the Chair will entertain a motion placed to suspend the rules in place on first reading.
We don't need to take action on that tonight.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Okay, well, I guess I was correct. Is there any unfinished business come before the council?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath?
Yes, Mayor, we need to talk about the COVID response on the, how it's being adjudicated by the county. We're getting several complaints about inspectors coming out and citing different bars and restaurants because of the way they have their tents set up, the way they're opened up, there's some that's got, they're in their buildings with doors open, and it's really not being, you know, enforced equally across the board, Mayor. I really think that this thing about the two-sided tents is ridiculous. I mean, you've got one business, it's a brick and mortar business, that they're inside and they open their windows, and they're good, and then you've got other businesses that go out and spend enormous amounts of money to comply with the order, which we're hearing different, from different sides. We're hearing that, hey, all's we're worried about is the ventilation, and we're not worried about the social distancing, that kind of stuff, but the people are spending enormous amounts of money trying to comply with this thing, and they're moving the goalposts on us all the time. Every time we turn around, they're moving the goalposts.
That, we had several complaints, I know, in my office with regards to that barrier issue, pointing out what you'd said, that one business had windows open, is acceptable, and that another one gets cited for the same type of setup, and so we can contact the county, but Chief Ed Canny wants to come up, but we'll probably converse with them on that.
It's important, Mayor, because, listen, I, you know, we all are trying to support our businesses because they're all going under. They are, and they're folding every day, new and folds. One of the instances was, I went out to Motorheads and had lunch the other day with, and observed how they had their windows open, and he spent enormous amount of money to put these windows in, where they open up at the base of the window and allow ventilation through the place, and the way he's got his heater system set up, that is still, is still easy enough to go in there and eat lunch or eat dinner. But the bottom line is, is that they cited him for that. It's ridiculous. He's got everything open, he's got, it's a two to a three-foot opening on every window, and he's got them all open. And then we got another business that's doing it different, and then we're talking about the corner pub, where they told them they had to have two sides up and two sides down. That's ridiculous. If you open up one end, if, Mayor, if you need, if it's about ventilation, then say it's about ventilation. We have to, we have to enforce this thing equally across the board. It's not being, it's not being done, and frankly, it's destroying our businesses, destroying us.
Yeah, it has to be consistent.
Yeah, so let me tell you, it's two separate issues. The tents is one thing, and DCEO sets the guidelines for that, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Chief, no offense, but would you mind taking, I cannot understand you.
Yeah, so Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity sets the rules for that. So it's two separate issues, inside a building, they're allowing, if you have 50% of your wall, you can be within eight feet of that open space. So if they, I don't remember what examples you gave, but if they remove that wall, or have mostly windows on that, they can have tables within eight feet, but those tables then still have to be spaced six to 10 feet apart. The tents, the rule for tents is for it to be considered outdoor dining, that two walls have to be open, so.
And that's in print someplace, that's.
That's DCEO's guidelines, Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, and you can get those on the state's IDPH has links to that, or you can go directly to DCEO's website, and they'll have, you know, the different things for each phase, phase one, two, three, four, and five, and then it'll have frequently asked questions and Restore Illinois, and if you click on that Restore Illinois box, it'll give you what the current rules are.
And so what's their enforcement authority? Where do they, where does it say that they can, we can go in and find these people, and who makes that decision?
So, the Public Health Act is, and I'm not real great on the whole law thing, that might be better for the attorneys, but the Public Health Act is what they're acting under, so, which is why Sangamon County Public Health is going out and doing a lot of these inspections.
But here's the, here's the problem, Chief, what we're running into is that we, our county health department oversees Menard County and Sangamon County. They're wide open in Menard County, they're wide open in DuPage County, all around the state, it's different. Sangamon County seems to be, and even in Sangamon County, it's different. The City of Springfield is being targeted, and I'm telling you, it's unfair, because you can go out in the county, and you can see the bars and restaurants wide open, and it, I'm not going to rat anybody, but I'm just telling you, it's not fair, and that's all I'm asking. Either we open the things up, or we close the things down. It's ridiculous.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have conversations.
I'm not blaming you, Chief.
No, I understand that completely, I do, and it's very difficult, and it's a fluid thing, but I know the mayor's been having conversations all along, and our goal is to try to keep everyone in business that we can, but we also have the pandemic to consider, so.
And we understand that. And another example that I have, Chief, is that a guy from Powell just sent me his criteria for how they keep that place sanitized. They changed the linen on every table, whenever, every customer comes through there, they change the linen. They clean down every surface every time they can, just so they can make sure that, some of our restaurants are cleaner than our hospitals. I'm not kidding you.
We don't disagree, but I'm just, I'm just trying to tell you where it's coming from, so.
You understand, this is not directly, you, you're carrying the water for us, and I understand that, we need to hear from you, and, but, it's just, there's so much, there's so much confusion out there, because one day, they move the goalposts to the other end of the field. It's ridiculous.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, and to piggyback on that, I'd like to know, is this based on people sending complaints? And to piggyback on that, I'd like to know, is this based on people sending complaints somewhere? And if it is, are these complaints anonymous? Because I have a real problem with anonymous complaints. I think a lot of times you get competitors that are complaining. And I just would like to know, because I'm hearing from some of the restaurants that they're getting visits from inspectors three times a week.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's complaint-driven. I would have to check.
I don't know how our police are doing it, but if it's an anonymous complaint, we should not be following up on anonymous complaints. They should have the right to know who's complaining about their business. Secondly, the concern I have is, the Governor said today or yesterday, I'm not sure, it's... They all seem to run together anymore, that even if our region, any region, would go below the threshold to where it would be able to open up, that he's not going to open it up because of the potential of a spike from Thanksgiving. That's not fair to these restaurants. And it's not just... I want to make sure everybody understands, it's not just restaurants and bars. Salons are affected, because they're cut back. There's other businesses that are affected by this. It's not fair to them. There's a lot of them that are struggling. And, you know, if they're gonna... We can't continue to move the goalposts. And we shouldn't be... My big thing is, we have to treat people the same way, the different restaurants. And it's not fair for us to say one restaurant can be open, and another one does the same thing that they do, but they're not doing it enough or something, you know, that... It's just frustrating. And then to say that if they're sitting by a window, they can go eight feet in, but the tables have to be six feet apart, that doesn't make sense either. So this whole thing is just convoluted as anything. And unfortunately, I don't know how all the other Aldermen are. I'm getting hammered. I know Alderman Redpath is getting hammered by the business owners. And, you know, we have no say-so in it. And I just really have... I'm concerned about this, so.
Yeah, we'll be... Alderman McMenamin.
We're getting hammered by everybody, because there's folks out there that want more mitigation, and there's folks that don't want more mitigation. As far as the changing goalposts, the goalposts are changing because the virus intensity changes. And when the intensity changes, you've got to change the ground rules. As far as our inspectors being out there, if the inspectors are informing the restaurants or whatever of the rules, and then they get cited, I hope those are advisory citations or warning citations. And it's only the refusal to follow that would kick in monetary fines. I think that's the approach that we've got to have. And it's a refusal to go along with the county health rules that is the problem, not finding someone who didn't know about the rule or thought the rule was somewhat different. So I hope the inspectors are taking that approach, because I agree with Alderman Redpath. When the rules do change, it's hard for people to catch up, and they've got to have a chance to comply. That's it, thanks.
Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I would ask you to talk to the county about this. I know that you and I had brief discussions today about that. But, you know, the bottom line is, is that we've got to do something to help these folks, because they're going under. Why don't we... Mayor, if... Maybe Corporation Counsel can answer this. Do we have to follow the guidelines of the commerce, Illinois Commerce Rule there, Corporation Counsel?
The Illinois Commerce Commission does not have jurisdiction over Springfield's utility? Is that the...
No, I'm talking about the health side of it. We're talking about the pandemic.
I'm sorry, you said Commerce Commission would...
Wherever they cited it from, I didn't...
I think it was the CDC. It's actually the CDC guideline.
There are federal guidelines, and then there are the state public health guidelines that are coming down to the Health Department. What the county's doing is using its authority under the licensing, their food licenses, to require places with food licenses to comply with those rules. So it's coming down through a regulatory process, but depending... It certainly should be applied equally.
It should.
That's all.
And Mayor, I'm asking you to consider going back to 25% capacity for the restaurants. I know that's a tough decision for you, but I think it's the right one to do.
On that, really, it comes down to public health. They issued the food licenses, but I will correspond with the county and regroup the one aspect that's not been discussed, the main metric, is the one with hospitalizations. That's the one that needs to come down more than what it has. And so that's very concerning, and until we actually see that happening, I think that's what's going to be a challenge to change any of it. I did have the initial discussions with the county when it was decided upon, the bars and restaurants would go to 0%. I said, when we are able to bring them back, the restaurants should come back first.
Right.
Not the bars. And so that's what I'll continue to contend, and hopefully the numbers continue to go down. We are the lowest in the state, I think our region is. So we need to continue in that fashion. So hopefully, everybody continues their compliance as much as possible with social distancing, wearing the mask around others, and then washing their hands, and limiting group get-togethers. And I think we'll continue to see that decrease, and hopefully we'll be able to, you know, codify the reasoning if we're able to move in one direction that we decide. But I'll have that correspond. I'll send the correspondence to the county public health or county officials with regards to the fine issue with if an individual does comply, or just, you know, only those that refuse to comply get fined. The other one is the tent versus the window. I think I agree. I think everybody's in agreement, there has to be more consistency. So Chief Canny was correct. He came up here. I've actually said that two months ago, when Buzzbomb was talking about having a tent in the wintertime in the street. And I said, at that point, I said, did you know you have to have two sides up? And they didn't even know it. But when you look at some of the restaurants that are allowed to open their windows, it's just one side. So, Chief Canny, which is correct, that you have your windows open, you can put them eight feet back. Well, tents should be the same way. You're outside, you have more airflow. So if you... I would think one section be up, not two, but one should suffice. Move everything back, and that would make sense. So there has to be some type of standardization, some type of consistency with regards to that, moving that direction. But I'll write something up. That way, we have it in writing. Hopefully, we get their response in writing, and everybody will be on the same page. But I agree with you with regards to... Here's the thing with Menard County, and nothing against Menard County, you know, every county's different, but here's where we're the same. We have the same public health department overseeing us. Sangamon County Public Health oversees Sangamon County, they oversee Menard County. We have the same hospitals that we utilize. We're in the same region, but they are not using the same enforcement measures, as you pointed out, with Sangamon County Public Health. That's where I have issues with that. It should be consistent with regard to that. So hopefully, we'll all move in the same direction, and hopefully, the decline of positivity rates, decline of hospitalizations, taking the stress off the hospitals. But as importantly are the staff there, the nurses and the doctors that have to contend with this. But keep in mind, that's the backstop. We all need to do our part and limit our gatherings and, you know, wear your mask and social distance as much as possible. And we'll hopefully continue to see that decline.
Could I make a request that we have a Gail or a representative from public health there at our next meeting? Because we still have a lot of unanswered questions about how they're calculating the numbers. And, you know, I talked to the hospital people, and I agree with you. It's all about, we don't want to overwhelm our capacity at the hospitals, because we need that space. But the bottom line is, is that are they counting... Are they counting, and maybe Ed can answer this, are they counting the people that are coming from the surrounding counties as being in Sangamon County? Are they counting them as where they came from? There's another criteria that I wanted to know about. They... A guy told me that he tested positive in his household, and they automatically put his wife and his two children as probables who are counted as positives. I want to know if that's true. If that's true, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to find out. I don't...
That probable thing just doesn't make any sense. And I understand their anticipation of trying to head it off.
It should be a positive affirmation, and that's one of the reasons that we will be bringing the saliva testing to the fire department, hopefully, if we're able to get that passed, so we can do the surveillance testing, you can identify positive cases sooner rather than later.
Would you please make the request to the Health Department to come here next meeting?
Yep. We've done that previously, we'll do it again. Alderwoman DeSento.
Thank you. Mayor, respectfully, over a five-day period last week, Menard County had 47 new positives, whereas we had 774 new positives. So to say Menard County is Sangamon County's problem, it just isn't true. Yes, we share the same hospitals. Yes, they are not following the same restrictions that we are. But, I mean, the proof's in the pudding, that our numbers are exponentially higher than theirs.
Because we test more.
774 compared to 47 in a five-day period? I think that speaks volumes.
We have 10 times the population.
We have 10 times the population, we test 10 times.
It doesn't matter. It's still numbers, and it's still our hospital system.
The bottom line is, the Governor, right? We're following the mitigation factors. If we are true believers of the Governor's mitigation factors, it's we're all in this together. So if that is the case, we made the tough decision. I took a lot of flak going from 50% to 25%, and I'll stand by that decision. And, you know, then we went to zero. We're enforcing. We rolled out the masks. We were the first city to roll out the masks. Everybody knows throughout the country, scientific proof, entities that have masks in place that are being followed have a greater propensity for decreasing positivity rates. So if we're all in this together, we all want to roll back and get our businesses open ASAP, that's all I'm saying. Everybody should follow those guidelines, especially the ones that are under the jurisdiction of the Sangamon County Public Health. Because I agree with the restaurants. If I'm a restaurant owner, I'm going to say, what the heck? You know, Sangamon County Public Health, you're picking on me, but you're... What about the other restaurants in our area that you oversee? You know, that's the inconsistency, and that's the frustration, not just with restaurants. I think the frustration's through the testing, not having accurate information, you get double answers on things. And this isn't just with our area, this is across the country. And so I was on a call, which is kind of reassuring today, with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, with the co-chair of President Biden's transition team on the COVID response. And that's one of the things they're looking for, is how do they get things moving in the same direction, taking a look at minimizing the impact across the board, and seeing how we can address this area by area. So I think that was somewhat heartening to hear, and hopefully, they follow through with that, because everybody shares the same frustration. But you can't have double standards with regards to that. Any other discussion on that? Is there any new business come before City Council?
Mr. Mayor, I have something old business.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch base on our Salvation Army Center over off of Jefferson. I stopped in the other day. Fine place, it looks like it's getting there. I was just a little concerned about the heat. Did we get that fixed? I know they was having some issues, I don't know if you know or not. But they definitely were having some heat issues. It was a little nippy in there. And, you know, I did see, I believe Admiral was there. I think I did see one of our chucks. I was just curious if, you know, we had a, you know, issue that maybe was going to last a little bit longer, or what that was, or if we got it fixed. As well as, you know, when we did this thing, you know, I advocated hard for it, are we just housing them, or are we continuing to try to work and get some mental health services over there? And, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, I see this place, you know, it has great potential and stuff, but, you know, it's sort of stagnant right now. You know, I'm just wondering if there's going to be more programming going with them, you know, how's COVID testing going, you know, things of that nature. Just making sure that we're not forgetting about them. I'm sure we're not. You know, I just stopped in there and, you know, talked to some folks, and, you know, some questions asked of me, so I just wanted to relay that information. I appreciate you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, the heat's working. I think they had an issue yesterday. I know on the... I did talk to Captain Jeff Eddy, asked how it was going, and that's one of the challenges, is getting support services and moving in that direction. So they are having, I think, a meeting tomorrow or this week to discuss that, because that's what has to happen with the continuum of care. So if it doesn't progress like we hope it would, then I'll ask the continuum of care to come and, you know, because it's just not Captain Jeff Eddy's issue, it's all of ours, but the continuum of care is supposed to be the driver in it. And so that's what we'll ask them to do, because the highest priority, when you're looking at funding for homeless initiatives, the highest priority is the street homeless, and that's where the Salvation Army, that's who they're housing. So everybody should be working together to make sure they get the support services, and because that would, in the long run, translate back to more dollars coming to Springfield for the homeless initiative.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that, and, you know, I'll probably stay on top of that, because, you know, like, you know, we mentioned before, sometimes we just go mum on this issue for whatever reason all year long, and then, you know, I don't want us to come back the next winter and we be scratching our head again. I really want to try to have a plan, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, the main thing, as you pointed out, it's person to person. That's where it starts.
Absolutely.
Any other new business? Alderwoman Turner.
I just wanted to acknowledge that today is December 1st, and it's World AIDS Day, and the theme for the 2020 observance is ending the HIV/AIDS epidemic, resilience and impact. I do want to also bring to everyone's attention that there are definitely parallels between what we are experiencing today with regard to the coronavirus epidemic and what we saw in the beginning of the HIV/AIDS epidemic. And we were very steadfast, stayed on it, and, you know, we saw some of the same things. In the beginning, people didn't believe that it was real, didn't believe the things that they were saying. But because we do believe in science, and we adhered to what our medical professionals were telling us, we turned the corner on that epidemic. And what we see today with it is not what we saw 20 years ago. And I believe that we will do the same with the coronavirus epidemic if we are steadfast, if we believe the science, if we stick with what our medical professionals are telling us, just like the, you know, we will turn the corner. And just like the theme for this year is the resilience and impact, I think that we will be resilient, and we will bounce back, but we do have to just stay the course.
Thank you for mentioning that. Actually, Corporal Counsel has the red ribbon that stands for the AIDS awareness stamp. Good job, Corporal Counsel.
I think you're wearing one, too.
Alderwoman DeSento. Hope your mic's off.
I just wanted to remind everybody that it's Giving Tuesday, and if you haven't, if you have any, you know, a few extra dollars to give to your favorite cause or charity, that you should do that today. There are so many people in need and so many organizations that need our help. So if anyone is able to do that, they should definitely do that today.
Great, thank you. And anything else? Is there anybody signed up to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, say nay. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.